Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of our guests and our commission to the February 13th, 2020 full county commission meeting. We'll call us into order. At this point in time, I'd like to call Chairman, our Commissioner, Commissioner of Steve Irwin, who is our County Commission Chaplain, to come forward. He will lead us in prayer, following the pledge of allegiance to our flag and after that, pledge of allegiance to our state flag. Commissioner Irwin.
Let's bow our heads in prayer. Dear heavenly gracious Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for all the gathering of the people here, and we just ask that we honor the people's vote and the votes of the commission and honor all our leaders, Lord. We ask that you continue to bless Rutherford County and the leadership of Rutherford County and also the leadership of our great country, and bless those people who are in attendance here tonight and also those at home watching. We offer up this day in your name, in Jesus' name we pray amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Three white stars on the field of the blue, God keep them strong and ever true. It is the pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
You may be seated. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Allen.
Mr. McAdoo.
Mr. McAdoo.
We have a quorum, 21 present.
21 present, we have a quorum. We'll now conduct our business. Members, before we get into item E, reading approval of the minutes, I would like to go over a couple, a couple of our rules of decorum. The mayor's office has had, since our last meeting in here, we've had a couple of complaints called in. So when you want to speak, I just ask that you either raise your hand and I'll, whatever topic that we're talking about, raise your hand, I'll write your name down. Mr. Spence will help keep track of that, or if you want to speak, just stand up and we'll recognize you at that point in time. And so when you're holding the mic, sometimes the mics have a tendency to drop down to your waist, and since we're being broadcast, the complaints were, we're watching from home and we can't hear what they're saying. So I ask you to, and don't be offended if I ask you to pull the mic back up a little bit closer, and sometimes people like to just put their thumb on their, on their chin and hold the mic close enough to where people in the audience and people on the viewing TV station can actually hear us as we conduct our business. Thank you very much, and sorry to bring that up, but had to address it. Item E, read and approval of the minutes. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Kethron. I've reviewed the minutes to our January meeting. I find them to be in order and move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted.
Motion's been made to dispense with the reading, move for approval, and we have a second from Commissioner Irwin. Any questions or discussions? Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item F, 2019 fiscal year, Mr. Coggan. Mr. Coggan's coming forward. You're welcome into well to give us a report from the Audit Committee. Mr. Coggan, you're recognized.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Robert Coggan. I am currently the Chairman of the Audit Committee. My purpose of being here tonight is to report on the fiscal year ending 2019 audit process and its findings. The committee met on May the 20th, 2019 with auditors to determine their independence. On November the 27th, 2019, the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury released its report, and on January 22nd of this year, the Audit Committee met to review the findings. I am pleased to report that there are no findings for the year ended June the 30th, 2019. The committee will be meeting soon with auditors, auditors to prepare for the 2020 audit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coggan. Any questions for Mr. Coggan? Seeing none, thank you very much for the audit report. Thank you, sir. Item G on the agenda is next. It's time for our public comments. We have five citizens who have signed up to speak. Once your name is called, we ask that you come forward to the well, give your name, your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. First on the agenda is former Commissioner, now a private citizen, Doug Schaefer. Mr. Schaefer, speak to us about debt. You're recognized. Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Name's Doug, Doug Schaefer. I live at 192 Morning Side Drive in Laverne, Tennessee, and I came tonight because I, for one, am tired of paying for the unincorporated part of the county's fire department. Citizens in Murfreesboro, Smyrna, and Laverne pay for their own fire protection, but there are funds in the county budgets that can be used for any numerous things, and they're helping to pay the individuals' fire protection in the county. And they can, these funds can be used for such things as unfunded mandates by the state. And I'm disappointed in the commission for not at least addressing this issue and looking into it. This is a partial cause of property tax increases, which all of us will pay, and believe it or not, renters do too. For example, class size in schools is one of those unfunded mandates. The Board of Education by order of the courts determines schools, and the county commission must find a way to pay for it. And if we don't have the right amount of students in the classes that are mandated, if we have more than are mandated by the state, we can be fined up to $75,000 a day. So our, our county's principal for debt has increased over $25 million each year of the last four years, and we're paying approximately $30 million each year of principal. That's not including the interest on it. The Tennessee General Assembly has rebuffed every effort Rutherford County has made to have growth help pay for itself. In fact, I brought an issue from two weeks ago from the Tennessean. Very seldom do I ever agree with anything in the Tennessean, but this says Nashville's growth does not pay for itself. Same thing in Rutherford County, growth alone does not pay for it. But yet the state now has money to give paid leave to state workers for maternity, medical and caregivers, free tuition to two-year community college with no repercussions if they don't complete. There is also a proposed bill in Nashville to cap property taxes. There are many other unfunded mandates that time does not allow me to discuss, but we're partly to blame because we keep re-electing the same state senators and representatives who will not give us a means to pay for building schools, except basically the property tax. All growth counties are in the same situation. The only chance we have to alleviate the situation is to join with other counties like Williamson and Wilson that are in the same shape as us, and to follow the Shelby and Davidson County lead and pursue legal action. Meanwhile, we need to use our monies in the most efficient way possible. All should share equally and begin with the fire tax for the unincorporated part of the county or do away with the fire department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Certainly appreciate you coming tonight. Next, we have Lynn Davis. Ms. Davis? She'll be speaking on the Second Amendment. Ms. Davis, you're recognized.
My name is Lynn Davis, and I live at 8039 Valley View Road in Las Casas. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. As many of you may know, I'm a lady of very few words, and I don't run to get in front of a microphone, but this is a subject that I'm very passionate about, our God-given constitutional rights and freedoms. I know some people have said that this resolution is useless, that we're wasting our time. I disagree. This resolution is a statement. Many of us have signed our signatures and our names, a thousand or so, names in agreement that we never want to lose our God-given Second Amendment rights and freedom. Those names and signatures should speak volumes to our legislators. We understand that this is a resolution and it has no legal stand, but I would never have believed that our country could have gone so far astray from what our founding fathers fought, died, and prayed for. Edmund Burke said, "The only thing necessary for triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." I do not take our freedoms lightly. I'm here today to ask you to vote yes on this resolution, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Next, we have Michael Hyatt, speaking on the Second Amendment. Mr. Hyatt, you're recognized.
My name is Michael Hyatt. I live at 10280 West Arnold Road, off Big Springs Road in Rutherford County. I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution for the Second Amendment sanctuary. I recently retired from MTSU where I taught for about 25 years. I'm also a retired lieutenant colonel after about a quarter century of active and reserve service as an Army Combat Engineer. So my father served in World War II in Europe, and where he met my German mother after the war. My mother grew up and suffered under Hitler's totalitarian regime, and she barely survived the war. She also experienced living under Russian communist occupation before fleeing to the western part of Germany, walking about 300 kilometers with only what she could carry with her and what she wore. My mother knew what it was like not having any rights except those granted by the government. She was overjoyed to finally reach America in 1952 after legally immigrating to the United States to enjoy the liberties she had been denied all her life that many here take for granted. Our rights do not come from the government, they come from our Creator. That's what our founders believed, that's what they fought a revolution for, and that's what they enumerated and enshrined in our Declaration of Independence and in our Constitution. Today, we see our government gradually eroding and encroaching upon our natural-born, God-given rights, including our right to bear arms. It is time to take a stand, draw a line in the sand, send a clear message that we will no longer tolerate our rights being taken away from law-abiding citizens by government decree and laws that go against the clearly enumerated and enshrined rights in our Constitution. That's what this Second Amendment resolution is meant to do. No one is under the delusion that this resolution is a law, but that, but it does send a clear message that we will stand with our citizens against any intolerable unconstitutional laws and acts that take away law-abiding citizens' natural-born, God-given rights. Hundreds of other counties across this country have passed similar resolutions, worded much as the same as this one. Rutherford County needs to do the same. There's no reason not to do so. We need to send a message to not only the citizens of our county and state, but the whole country, that we will stand by and stand up for our natural-born, God-given rights that our founders enshrined in our Constitution. And I sincerely urge every one of you on the commission to vote for this resolution to so, just to show your constituents and the country that you support what our founders believed and fought for two and a half centuries ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Next, we have Ramona DeSalvo. You're recognized, Ms. DeSalvo.
Kethron, my name is Ramona DeSalvo. I live at 9620 Roanoke Drive in Murfreesboro. I find it odd that I'm here because I'm not a gun enthusiast, and in fact, I've only shot a shotgun once a long time ago at a duck, and the duck laughed because I missed, and that was my interaction with guns. My father was a gun enthusiast and a lifelong NRA member. My father also had a terminal illness and ended his life with a gun. So I am no fan of guns, but I am a fan of our natural, God-given rights, as you've heard, just heard Michael Hyatt say, the right to bear arms. We are born free, self-governing Americans, and we have a right to self-defense, we have a right to hunt, we have a right to carry guns, and even though I don't use a gun, I don't like them very much, but I certainly, if someone's going to tell me I don't have the right to go buy one or to use one, I don't think so. It's in the Second Amendment, but the Second Amendment doesn't give us that right. It just says the federal government shall not infringe that right, and shall, I'm a lawyer also, by the way, and shall not in the law means mandatory, it's not optional. If it was, it would say may not infringe, but this says shall not infringe, and that's exactly what it means. I too understand, as I'm sure this commission does, that a resolution isn't a law, it's not a bill, but it is a, it is an expression of the view of this representative body, and, and if you pass that, that speaks for Rutherford County. You are our local representatives, and we would like you to send an unequivocal message across this state to our General Assembly and join with the rest of the counties in this state to confirm that we believe firmly in the Second Amendment, and it shall not be infringed by any state legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeSalvo. Last, we have Andy Olson, he'll be speaking on the Second Amendment. Mr. Olson? You're recognized, Mr. Olson, in the well.
My name is Andy Olson. I live at 4914 Ark Lane in Murfreesboro. I think you're going to hear a running theme tonight, as you've already heard, about our rights and what we, what we want to accomplish with this resolution. I'd like to start off by recognizing Commissioner Reed. I think I speak for the nearly 1,000 people that signed the petition and all, if not most, of the people that are here tonight in saying thank you. Thank you for having the, the courage and the fortitude to stand up with your convictions and author this resolution and present it here tonight on behalf of the citizens of Rutherford County. I'd also like to cover something that was said here last week by another Commissioner, and I quote, "The rights that are permitted by county government are only those rights that are specifically granted to us by state legislature." Well, I for one take offense to that. My rights, our rights, are not permitted or granted by any government, anywhere. Our rights are God-given, inalienable rights that are protected and guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States, one of the best documents ever written in the history of man. Excuse me. The Constitution states that these rights are not to be taken away from us by anyone. Another sentiment that was given last week was that the, the 800 signatures, which were up to almost 1,000 now in the last week, and if you add in the amount of permits that are bought by citizens of Rutherford, along with hunting licenses, there's thousands of people that, that agree with what we're trying to do here tonight. The, the reason that we came to this commission is to start at a local level. We're sending a message to the state legislatures with this resolution that we are not going to comply with any laws that try to take away our rights, that are, that are a, a clear violation of many of our rights, not just the Second Amendment. This is not just about guns and the Second Amendment. This is about due process, this is about standing up for what we believe in right, is right as Americans. The, sorry, I get a little passionate about this. The, the petition that, that we had signed is, is something that I think everybody needs to understand, this is the will of the people. This is what the people want. So not only are you sending a message to state legislators, but you're sending your constituents a message tonight on how you vote on this. If, if you vote yes to this resolution, then you're sending us a message that you're upholding your oath to the Constitution and in so protecting our rights. If you vote no, then we know where you stand come election time. I think that's important to remember tonight, and, and we want this resolution passed as written. The wording in this resolution is similar to many of the resolutions that are passed across the country, so I don't see a reason to change anything about it. I think it needs to be passed as written, and, you know, we hope that you'll uphold your, your oath and vote yes with this, or ignore the voice of we, the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Call the commission back into order. I'd like to call on item H, elections confirmation. Commissioner Reed, if you would, please come forward for our elections and confirmations. Commissioner Reed, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, there's a listing of notaries that may be found on your iPad at this time. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
I have a motion, I have a second, by Commissioner Cook. Any objection? Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, steering wishes to confirm Donald Lester to the PBA board. Mr. Chairman, I do so move.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Irwin, Mr. Kush, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Steering wishes to confirm Caleb Porter to the PBA board. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Phillips, any questions? Comments? Seeing none, without objection, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Steering wishes to confirm William Rosley to the Beer Board as an alternate. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Johnson, any questions, comments? Without objection, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We've got about six minutes. We'll move on into a resolution to approve the consent agenda. Members, on item I, Chairman Pro Tim Phillips, you'll be recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Kethron. I've reviewed the items that are listed on the consent agenda. I agree that they're all appropriate and move that the consent agenda be adopted as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner P, on the second, any questions, comments? Objections? Without objection, all those in favor, signify by, excuse me, roll call. We're on the board, consent agenda. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Anyone yes, motion passes.
Motion passes. We've got five minutes. We have no unfinished business at this time. We'll move on to, we've got five minutes before we have public hearings. We can move on to reports by standing committees. Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Commissioner P, we'll get started. We've got five minutes, and we may ask you to take a break and come back. You're recognized, Commissioner P, from Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got three resolutions to look at. First item is L1A, and this is some transfers for solid waste fund. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the solid waste fund be amended as follows. The convenience center increased expenditures for tires and tubes, $45,000, and a decrease in assigned fund balance of $45,000. Also, on the solid waste fund, a post-closer care cost, and this is for engineering services, increase in expenditures of $62,000, and a decrease in assigned fund balance of $62,000. And this is for the core drilling that we talked about in Public Works and also in Budget, where we'll be doing some testing to possibly let out bids in the future. Mr. Chairman, resolve this 13th day of February 2020. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion, I have a second. Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion? We'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
21 yes, motion passes.
Our next item is item L1B. This is a resolution from the Highway Department. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Highway Fund be amended as follows. This is increased expenditures for postal charges of $2,300 and a decrease in committed fund balance of $2,300. And also, we have increased expenditures, and this is for a, another person that we'll be working with them, data process personnel, $16,700, social security, $1,045, pension, $1,795, employment and dependent insurance, $2,450, disability insurance, $45,000, employee Medicare, $255,000, and a decrease in committed fund balance of $22,360. Resolve it this 13th day of February 2020. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Johnson, any questions? Comments? Seeing none, we'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Mr. P.
It's blank. I mean, I'll vote aye, but this is not working.
Commissioner P votes aye, let the record reflect. Commissioner P votes aye. Sorry, technical difficulty. Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now. We have 21 yes, motion passes.
Motion passes. Commissioner P, I'm going to ask you to take. All right, go ahead with item C.
Item L1C is a report of our debt obligation. If you look on your iPads, you'll see there's only two items there, and we're required by our own rules and by state law to show that. by our own rules and by state law to show this anytime we borrow money. This was internal borrowing, but still, it's something that we always want to put out there for you, but that's for information only.
Thank you, Chairman P. Members, now it's time for our public hearing. I'd like to call on Doug Demasi, our county planning director. Mr. Demasi? You're recognized.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Ketchum, and thank you as well, and good evening to all the members of the county commission, those who are here in attendance tonight. We have one item for your consideration tonight for rezoning. This is for property located along Butler Drive, two different pieces of property, about 22 acres. The applicant is Veronica Buchanan and Anderson King Jr. Let me get my spare report here. The applicant would like to zone this property from what it's currently zoned, which is residential medium density, to light industrial. There's no specific development plans for this property, so you won't find any concept plan with, in your agenda material on your ad pad tonight. They did indicate, however, that they would like to market the property for possible manufacturing businesses, or possibly combine the property with light industrially zoned property right to the south, or possibly combine it with the subject track with property to the west, which was recently annexed into the city of Murfreesboro and also has an industrial classification on it. Access to this property would be and was, is still, and would continue to be from Butler Drive. The right-of-way that fronts along these properties was recently annexed into the city of Murfreesboro, so any development along this particular stretch of Butler Drive would have to speak with the city of Murfreesboro officials as far as accessing the road. Light industrially zoned properties are required to install a type-three buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned properties. Buffering would not be required between this property and any of the industrially zoned properties to either the south or to the west. Eventually, to the north, if that property ever rezones, right now it is zoned for residential purposes, that would be a possibility, but if it rezones in the future, that may not have to happen. Performance standards, of course, would have to be met as well as they would for any commercial or industrial business. This application is more speculative in nature, but this property is located along a corridor that is increasingly becoming more commercial and industrial in nature. It's expected, from staff standpoint, considering the proximity of this properties to the I-24 and Joby Jackson interchange. There was very little discussion on this application at the Planning Commission, and the commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions for Mr. Demasi from the commissioners? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Demasi. I'll now call our Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. Public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue, please come forward, state your name, your address, and if you are for or against the proposed request. Seeing no one coming forward, and I declare this public hearing closed. Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Do I have a motion? Have a motion?
My district.
Commissioner Rather. Commissioner McAdoo.
Making a motion to approve the rezoning.
Have a motion from Commissioner McAdoo, second from Commissioner Rather on the rezoning Any discussion? Without objection, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Demasi. We'll continue on back on our standing committees. No report, Health and Education Committee, Commissioner. Property Management, no report. Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Reed, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just told I'm on the clock. I have been on the clock for a good while. Actually, I started on this back in December, commissioners, and if any of you have been to some of the commission meetings or committee meetings I've been to and where we've worked on this, you understand the trail that this all started from and where I began with this effort. And along that trail, I've run into a lot of interesting people, a lot of interesting stories, and you've heard some of those tonight here as we've gone through this, and their effort and what they're attempting to do and where they're trying to go and what they're wanting other people to understand, why they're doing this and why I'm doing this and what we're looking for. Just this evening, I had an individual from this group that you see here tonight, and first of all, let me say I appreciate each and every one of you coming out tonight. They've been hard at work. They've been standing out in the rain, getting signatures on these petitions. They've talked to a lot of people, and they've done it in a very polite and proper way. The thing I've been impressed with is the fact that we've had actual petitions hand-signed by individuals from Rutherford County citizens. Their names are on it. They know who they are. They're their neighbors. They're people who are interested in this, and they have a goal to accomplish. But tonight, I was sitting right back here, and a gentleman walks up to me. Mr. Louie is sitting right back here, I believe, aren't you, Mr. Louie? Mr. Louie comes to us from another state. As soon as he walked up, I made the statement, I said, "You're not from here, are you?" He's from New York. Mr. Louie was in New York when 9/11 happened, and he told me his story. His wife has 9/11 asthma, if I'm correct, but they've moved here to Tennessee, and he was telling me how proud he is to be in Tennessee because they left New York because of some of the things that, why we are proposing this resolution, of things that in the law up there has been taken away from them. And I was just so impressed with his story, an individual that was there and something we all, we all ask once a year, "Do you remember where you were when that happened?" You don't have to ask Mr. Louie that. He knows where he was that day when that happened. But the resolution I'm going to bring to you tonight started with me when I started reading some of the things that's going on within this country and some of the things that are happening in our sister states, and some of the things that are actually discussed in our own state legislature. But when I was told, "You don't have to worry about it, it'll never happen here. You don't have to worry about it, this'll never happen here." I don't like the word "never." I've had too many things in my life happen that I thought, "That'll never happen, that'll never happen again." And today, as I was getting ready to make this reading of this resolution before you and this request, I just so happened had someone send something to me, not even thinking about that I was going to make this presentation to you, but he was just talking about, he knew my love of history and the way things happen, and you know, you always have heard that if you don't study history, you're subject to repeat it. And he sent me a lot of information on the past wars. I have, sitting over here at my desk, a picture of my grandfather that was made out here on these steps on the south side of this building, not on these steps, but what was here before we built in addition. He left for World War I right out there, and he ended up in the Oregon Forest, and he left from there when armistice was signed. That's when he got to leave. In fact, he went to the ship to come home after being there during World War I, and the first sergeant was standing on the ship, put his hand on his chest, and said, "Stop right here." Said, "You'll have to wait for the next ship. The next ship comes six months later." That's the family I come from. He was later to become a squire in this very courtroom. That's one reason I'm here tonight. But what come from what I was sent today come from a poem that was written by Martin Nemer. Martin Nemer was a German Lutheran pastor, and I don't know if you've ever heard this poem, but he was there when the Germans, Nazis took over, and he was disappointed himself of what he had to deal with at that time. And his poem says, "First they came for the socialist, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionist, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me." I think that's what the individuals who have come here tonight, is that they are speaking out before anything like this happens within our own country. And tonight, I'm reading this resolution, speaking out for them. So, the resolution I wish to present this time, and this is the third time that we presented it, one to public safety and then the other time to our steering. A resolution of the Rutherford County Commission reaffirming its support of the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution. Whereas on October the 25th, 1803, the Tennessee Legislature authorized the county of Rutherford to become the 24th county, to be established in Tennessee with the county government to operate under the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the great state of Tennessee. And whereas, in their wisdom, our founders, when creating those documents, unanimously recommended constitutions that maintain an inalienable right to keep and bear arms and have been further upheld by subsequent decisions by the U.S. Supreme Court. And whereas, the right as originally written and understood to keep and bear arms for self-defense, personal safety, protection of one's family, and defense of one's community and county. And whereas, the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution ratified on December the 15th, 1791, as part of the Bill of Rights, so states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And whereas, it is desire of the Rutherford County Commission to declare its reaffirmation and support of the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution and to protect the inalienable right to keep and bear arms as it relates to the citizens of our county. And whereas, each county commissioner upon election took an oath to support and defend the United States Constitution and the state of Tennessee Constitution. And whereas, Rutherford County has been blessed by state legislatures and governors that have continually upheld the Second Amendment, protecting our law-abiding citizens, the inalienable rights to keep and bear arms. As a county commission, we still ask for their continued support and efforts in protecting those rights. And whereas, as recorded in other counties within our state, the term sanctuary county should not be considered to confirm making Rutherford County a safe haven for criminals, but rather a safe haven to protect good, law-abiding citizens from unconstitutional laws that infringe on one's liberty, freedoms without due process. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners hereby has reaffirmed its support of the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and declare Rutherford County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary county. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect from and after the date of its approval before the full county commission. Resolve this 13th day of February 2020, Rutherford County, Tennessee. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and I have a second. Many seconds? Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have Public Works and Planning Committee, no report. Steering Legislative Governmental Committee, no report. Statements and announcements. Commissioner P. Little ham coming our way.
That's right. This Saturday, February the 15th, from 6:00 to 10:00 a.m., there'll be a country ham breakfast at Kitchell. We also serve pancakes for you guys that are trying to cut down on your cholesterol a little bit, but we want to invite you out, and it's always a pleasure to see you. You might even see a few people out campaigning, who knows?
Thank you, Commissioner P. For all those in the audience, if you like good country ham and red-eye gravy, come out to Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department Saturday morning. What time?
6:00.
6 o'clock, 10 o'clock, there'll be a big crowd. Commissioner Irvin, statements and announcements.
Yeah. The 16th Judicial Rutherford County Veterans Court on Wednesday, the 19th, will hold its veterans' graduation. We laid invitations on every commissioner's desk, and we'd like them to show up and support our veterans, and it'll be at the Judicial Building in Judge McFarland's court.
Thank you, Commissioner Irvin. I urge members, I urge you, if you want to see something that's touching, where these veterans have come back and they've had some issues, and they've gone through the veterans' court, working with the judge, got their lives back together, become sober, whatever their issues have been, overcome their issues with the court, and it's a graduation time, and it's very moving if you can just take a few moments and come watch this process of their graduation from the probation. Any other statements and announcements? Commissioner Phillips, and then, okay, Commissioner Gammann, second.
Thank you. I'd just like to congratulate Ms. Nolan and her department on the audit findings, and also thank very much Mr. Coggan and his committee for all the work that they've done. Zero findings with a county our size, and the finances that we go through every year is not to be taken lightly, and I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Nolan, for the job that you do. And ask that along to your staff if you would.
It was not done alone, and it's also the work of the Board of Education, all the fee offices, I mean, it's everybody in this big ship that did their job.
Congratulations.
Figure it out someday. I just have a statement. I don't know how many veterans are on the commission. I know that Commissioner Johnson is and myself, but I feel like I'd be dishonoring my family and other veterans that may be in this room, but I just want to say that our father served the United States Army, he was airborne. My brother served the United States Army, he's retired colonel. I served in the United States Army, active, and the Tennessee National Guard for nine years, and my son served in Afghanistan. And what brings that to light is the veteran, because I lost my son.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammann. Yeah, a couple of announcements. Remember to vote. Early voting has begun, and please exercise your right. That's one thing that can't be taken away from us, is our God-given right to vote in this free country. Also, remember your significant other, spouse, whatever, go get some roses and a card. Or if you want to go on Cheapside, wait till Saturday, they'll go on sale and find out what cards are left, but happy Valentine's. Any other statements and announcements to come before us? Is there a motion to adjourn? So, move. We are adjourned. Thank you.